Landucci Italia, 824 Main Street, Falmouth. Ma-
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Tonight is Monday, July the 30th. If you'll all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tonight we have a substitute recorder, Virginia Carmichael. So Carol Sutherland, who will be returning next week for the Board's information. First up tonight, approved funds for the housing demand study submitted by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee. Patty Haney, we got you there?
Yes, sir. Standing in for Ken Buckland, who's sitting in traffic. I guess a car broke down in the HOV lane and they couldn't get a tow truck. So he might be back in town tomorrow. Okay, the Affordable Housing Committee has come to the CPC to ask for money for a housing study. As some of you may remember, we did one seven years ago, or no, five years ago, in 2007. And that was based on the 2000 and 2006 census data. It also was done at exactly the wrong time because the housing crisis pretty much wiped it out as soon as it came out. So we're looking at wanting to update the study and to add some more elements to it. One of the things we're looking at is that the selectmen are going to be doing their five-year plan soon, and this would be very helpful information, I think, to sort of project out for the next five years what kinds of needs we're going to have. The report is going to include projections for the affordable housing supply and demand over the next five years, recommendations for regulations, financial incentives, and collaborations that we can make that will be helpful over the next five years. And it's also going to help the Community Preservation Committee to evaluate proposals that come into us. If we know what's needed, we'll have some priorities for what kinds of things we need to be funding in the next five years. Are there any questions? Oh, also, the amount, that wasn't on there. The amount that the Affordable Housing Committee requested was $40,000, which we thought was high. And we agreed that $30,000 would be a better figure for this type of study. And we arrived at that by consulting with various people who have done these types of studies.
Any questions from the Board?
I have a comment.
Sure.
This would be something, I think, to transmit to the consultant, whoever that person might be, is to look at future initiatives on the Cape that could impact affordable housing that aren't in place yet, such as Open Cape. You know, when we have that internet capacity, that broadband width. It's going to make it easier for young people to stay here and live here because they can work anywhere in the world and still live here and possibly at least be able to earn a living wage in that. So I think when you look at affordable housing, you need to take that huge sea change that could happen here into consideration.
That's a really good idea. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other? Doug?
I have to admit my arguments as to exactly what funds we are approving. Whether this is not CPC funds, but the CPC is recommending it. The Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund is something that the Board of Selectmen has jurisdiction over, and the money came from, this is where I don't understand.
Money came from the CPC, but I'll let Patty explain it to you a little bit more in depth.
The Affordable Housing Fund is something that a lot of communities that have the CPC are doing. The reason for it is that a lot of housing proposals that come to us can't really wait till town meeting.
Okay.
And so the money is then accessible at your pleasure in a faster way. But it is the same money.
And it's important to note, this money has already been appropriated at town meeting and put aside so that they can react and then go back to the Board.
Thank you very much.
Am I right?
Absolutely.
One more thing I forgot to mention, because a lot of people don't realize it's there. The Cape Cod Commission has a database called Stats Cape Cod, S-T-A-T-S. Deborah probably knows about it. Has an enormous amount of information about jobs, incomes, where people live, housing, the need for it. It built out, it has everything on it. So that would be a really easy place for a consultant to access information, Kate White.
Yes, yes. And we also are going to have our consultants speaking with people and interviewing people, which is an element that we didn't have so much in the last one.
I just wanted to bring up, and this is not specifically about this. I got a couple of calls over the weekend about consultants, and it wasn't specifically for this, but this is what prompted the call. And the caller suggested that we have staff do things like this. And my explanation was that, you know, although we do have planning staff, you know, the CPC does have a part-time planner, we don't have the excess time as well as the expertise in each and every one of these areas where we have consultants. One of the good parts, good things that the caller brought up was that collectively the Board might want to look at how much we spend a year on consultants, because that's something as we get to the budget. And this, just a sidebar on this, I'm not throwing any rocks in the way of this, but it might be something that, it was a good issue, that how much do we in fact spend in a year on consultants for different particular projects? That being said, I'd be looking for a motion for this, for the $30,000.
That is a good point, Kevin. And we did check with the planning department to see if we could collaborate with them and if they had information they could provide us, but they apparently are very busy.
Oh, go ahead. You want to make the motion?
No, I wanted to make a clarification. There are consultants and there are contractors, and they're not always the same thing. A consultant might be part of an RFP where the information that's required in the RFP, you have, you bring in a consultant. Like when the Board of Selectmen hired a consultant to hire a new town manager. I mean, that was all part of a scope of services. Then you sometimes have contract services where there's a void in some service. Maybe someone in a position resigned, and you're not able to fill it for four or five months. But you, there are certain aspects of the workload that have to be done. So someone who is not an employee is brought in on a temporary basis to complete some of the work that's necessary. So I don't know how, and I don't know what kinds of questions you're getting from the public, but there are two different ways in which we bring people into the town. And there may be more, but those are the only two I can think of right now.
I wholeheartedly agree. If we found someone who had an expertise in every specific area where we hire a consultant, I don't think we'd need any one of us nor the town managers. So it would be great to have one person that could do it all, but I don't think those people are out there.
Yeah, I guess I was pointing out that the consultants are sometimes part of a project, part of an RFP. We don't just hire consultants to hire them. But if we hire a contract person, it's also, but for a very specific short-term reason. Just differentiate, so.
But I think it's a good exercise to look at the money, how much we spend yearly on that, and as we go down staffing levels as we move forward for the future.
And I suppose to really explain it, these would not necessarily be additional funds. They would be funds that are already allocated to a project with a consultant. And they would be funds that were probably allocated to a salary line for an employee. So it's not spending more money. It's spending money that's either part of a project or part of a salary line or some other line in the budget. So I think it should be made clear if whoever's going to do this.
Okay.
All right.
David, did you want to make a motion?
I was going to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve the amount of $30,000 from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to complete the housing demand study submitted by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee.
Well done.
Thank you.
So there's a motion, and do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item will be at 7:20, so we'll move to the summary of actions. If I could get down through the list for the Board. Number one is vote 2012 state primary warrant. Number two, approved request for special event. West Falmouth Day. Did you want to hold that, or do you want that to go through? Do you want to speak in regard to that? No, I'm just asking, do you want to give a commercial? We'd be happy to let you tell folks about it. We'll just hold it for a second. Number three, approved request for parking on Church Street, Woods Hole. Hold that, please. Approved request for special event Marine Corps League voluntary toll booth. Hold. Approved request for special event National MS Society Walk. Number six, approved request for special-
Hold.
Number six?
Yep.
Okay. Number seven, approved request for special event Falmouth firefighters. Fill the booth. Stop and shop intersection T-Ticket Highway and Jones Road on 811. And number eight, approved request for a wedding. Hamel on Surf Drive Beach, 92112. And the next is approved request for off from assigned Menard Beach fundraiser on 8412.
I don't know if you heard, he held number seven, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I heard that.
I move approval of one, five, eight, and nine.
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? The ayes have it. We're going to get you out of here early tonight, so if you'd like to get up and speak about the West Falmouth Day at Swift Park on the 7th of October.
All right. Paul Sellers, resident of West Falmouth, representing the West Falmouth Village Association this evening. And you've pretty much covered everything. It's West Falmouth Day that we're proposing, a kind of a, not so much of a new concept that was actually held years ago. There's a number of residents in West Falmouth that remember it as kids. We plan on holding this at the ballpark, Swift Park and playground. It's going to take place throughout the day through West Falmouth. We've incorporated a number of businesses into the plan, as well as a fun bike ride down to Woods Hole and back as well. So we're encouraging all of our neighbors to come out and spend the day getting to know each other a little bit better.
Okay. Anyone have, anyone want to make a motion? Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Ayes have it.
See you in October.
Thank you. The next is approved request for parking on Church Street and Woods Hole on 810. That's the 10th of August, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Two days before August.
Right. And we do have a request. We do have something back from the Police Department that they would like the folks to speak with the Church of Messiah, but unfortunately, the folks have already spoken to the Church of Messiah. They're a little concerned about traffic on that road, so I just wanted to bring it to the Board's attention. I had asked today if there was any additional opportunities to do something somewhere else. In other words, parking at another location and then bus them in, but the Police Department was not able to get back to us today on that. This again is on the 10th of August, so it's relatively soon.
Is that the Road Race Weekend, you said?
That's the Friday.
Well, it's the Friday before, so.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I don't know. There doesn't seem to be much of an alternative. The person who's requesting it is having someone, having hiring someone to manage that parking. Something in the neighborhood of 15 cars or less.
Maybe, maybe we could appease both the folks in the Police Department by asking to hire a detail instead of a person. Whatever police office. On Friday evening.
That's a possibility.
I feel for the folks. They're having an event at their house. I want to be able to accommodate them, but what's the thoughts of the Board?
I actually appreciate the request as opposed to just going ahead and doing it, which is, I think, what a lot of people do.
In some ways, maybe to set the standard that, we appreciate this, that, you know, I'm
not sure if it's really going to set a precedent, and everyone else is going to be asking too. But I do like the idea of putting the police detail on as a request back, saying that we approve it with that kind of a stipulation, just because it could be very busy there.
I tend to agree with you. Folks who ask for sign variances are usually the ones who ask for it versus the folks who just put up the sign. And I'd much, I'd be much more willing to roll with somebody in that situation. So you want to frame a motion?
I move approval of the request for parking on Church Street with the request on our part that they hire a police detail for the time of the party.
So there's a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. We'll move back to the regular agenda, which is discuss a vote, the authorization of the transmittal of the draft comprehensive wastewater management plan. As the folks out there know, the Board of Selectmen had a presentation from the Comprehensive Wastewater Group. It was a thoughtful, long dialogue that has taken many years to come to this point. The Board of Selectmen had a couple of concerns, I don't think they were concerns, but clarifications in regard to the financing aspect of it. And I know there's been some input back and forth with the Board of Selectmen through the town manager, and we've come up with what everyone appears to be happy with in regard to the financing plan. Does anyone else want to speak? Julian, would you like to speak a little on this, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the, as Chairman has indicated and as Board is aware, we did suggest some modest but very significant narrative changes in both the Volume One of this large plan as well as the executive summary. And that includes two fold-out financing-related tables, spreadsheets, that are part of both of those documents. And we transmitted with the Board's concurrence to the Water Quality Management Committee, Mr. Trickett is Chair, and those changes, and essentially, we have a concurrence in that fine-tuning in the plan. What the Board has received a copy, I should mention the one with the green highlight on it, are the narrative changes, actually, the actual pages from the plan, which we're in the process of changing, working with a consultant. But it includes the new language, which the Board has overseen, as well as some fine-tuning on the subsequent pages, the new spreadsheet table. Again, the green highlighted one is from the summary document. The blue highlighted one under it is from Volume One of the plan. As the Board's aware, the pages are numbered differently, the headers are different, but the narrative within the executive summary and Volume One of the plan are identical. But we have to have those two sets because, again, the pages are numbered, it's organized a little differently, as well as the spreadsheet table. So the Board has a copy of those revised pages with some additional, very minor fine-tuning. There is one other, one other item on the spreadsheet where we continued to mention under item number five, a $9 million construction amount. We might want to make a tiny adjustment there on the spreadsheet, just to reflect the fact that that is, those are dollars to be looked at comprehensively and not exclusively for wastewater, consistent with the rest of the comments and the balance of the narrative. And the intent of this is for the actual pages themselves to be amended and reinserted in the plan so that the document which the Board subject to your approval, of course, would authorize to be forwarded and filed, would be complete and whole in its entirety and not have addendums at this point in time. Certainly, reviews will still be forthcoming. The Board will have the opportunity to consider suggestions for other changes as this unfolds. But as far as your action based upon the recommendation of the Water Quality Management Committee, the Board appropriately wants to have it as complete as possible. So you've got a couple of choices. One is to move forward with these changes that the Board has in front of you, not seeing at this moment the final form, but conceivably allowing Chairman Murphy and I to oversee that, that fine-tuning, or you could await individual receipt of all those pages. I would recommend, if the Board's willing, that you have those changes in front of you to allow Chairman Murphy and I to do that fine-tuning, wrap that up on the Board's behalf, and include the language that the Board intends, if that would be your desire.
I did want to speak on this a little bit in regard to the fact that time is of the essence with the group. They would like to move this to the state. I think the alternative that we have before us tonight is to move this in concept. We'll put the final wording in, and the town manager and I will both approve it, and move it on to the state for the transmittal. That way, we would not have to come back here in two weeks. We do not have a meeting. Pardon me. We do, we're on the 13th. So in a week, so this, this would help expedite the entire process. So if we could make the motion based on the fact that, for the final approval of that motion, but with the final approval of the, of the town manager and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. So in other words, we want the actual plan to see that it's not in an addendum that, and with the final language that we have.
Well, I have a motion that Julian just gave.
Okay, that's great.
But I wanted to make a couple of comments. I think this is not a major change. I think what it does, it's these changes that in the, in the redraft really are part, are one section of the executive summary, where it just talks about the estimated costs and the financing, and also in the body of the document itself, where it talks about the financing plan. And what it does is, it really clarifies the town's position that when these, when, when debt is retiring, and it does, there is a schedule for when the debt retires because that was planned that way, that the, this plan will also take, or the financing will also take into consideration the other capital needs of the town as well, this being a major one, but there may be others too. And it just simply clarifies that point. So it doesn't really, it's not a major change. It's more of a change that will help the community focus, not in the details of the financing, but how that financing, the, the aspects of the financing and what the Board's going to look at when those, when that debt retires.
Right. I think it's important to note that, as we all know, projects like this take a lot of time sometimes, and things don't come to fruition based on the timelines that we all might set, and with the best intentions. So we want the flexibility to be able to use these windows of opportunity for other things and maybe substitute things back and forth as we move forward. This provides those opportunities.
And the other comment is, there are people who have comment on this draft already. And what the message, our message to them is, there will be a 90-day public comment period beginning with the vote. And once that happens, all those comments that people have, they can make those to, in the proper setting, in the proper form, to the proper people, which would be from the state, as well as from the Cape Cod Commission and local officials as well. So those comments will not be lost. They just need to be made at the proper time.
Did, Eric, did you want to say anything, or are you happy the way this is progressing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town manager did share with us the, the language, the tweaks, as it were, and the substantive changes that you proposed, and we circulated them among some of the committee, and we find no fault with it. It actually expresses what we expressed jointly the last time we were here, that these windows of opportunity are not exclusively for wastewater, they're for other things as well.
Great. Okay, so.
I think I can make this up.
Why don't we put a motion on the floor, and then if there's any additional discussion we can do.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the town manager and the Board of Selectmen Chair to oversee the insertion of the Board of Selectmen's final plan changes and to forward the draft comprehensive wastewater management plan submitted by the Water Quality Management Committee, dated July 9th, 2012, to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Program, MIPA, and the Cape Cod Commission for consideration, review, and comment.
It's a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Doug?
I guess just a clarification on something that Mr. Suso has said. On Table 17, 7-2, Item 5, is the idea that we are not going to list $9 million in that item, or we're going to list some dollar figure, or what was it? I didn't quite follow what you were saying, where we're going to, how we're going to do that.
Certainly. Thanks for the clarification. Certainly. Thanks for the clarification. Our preference, well-stated, was not to, not to give a specific dollar amount in general. However, in speaking, in, with Water Quality Management Chair Eric Turkington, the reality is that this $9 million is the amount that would become available in the spring, and that is not far off, even though we hate to think that the summer is waning, spring is certainly not far off. And so the reality is that $9 million amount will become available. What we would like to adjust, suggest is to leave that $9 million there, but however, make it clear that that represents not just construction design for the wastewater process, but this comprehensive capital analysis as well, including wastewater needs. So we would want to tweak the language just slightly to reflect that comprehensive approach, rather than wastewater only.
Okay, perfect. I understand.
Thanks for that clarification. Mr. Chairman, can I make one other comment?
Yes, sure.
If I may, and I know I did this on behalf of the board, just giving out an exceptional thanks to Chairman Turkington and all the members of the Water Quality Management Committee for their yeoman's work, meeting steadfastly, meeting after meeting, and crafting this exceptional, really extraordinary document that reflects out-of-the-box thinking, in which the Department of Environmental Protection is closely monitoring, because it really sets a new standard for adaptive management, as we call it, and creative approaches to wastewater problems that could easily apply throughout the Cape. And really, kudos to the committee, who I know that prior to my arrival was designated by this board to do this kind of creative, exceptional thinking. And really, it's, as town manager in my several months here, I marveled at the process they were undertaking, the enormous progress they made, the knowledge and the wisdom that they brought to bear, meeting after meeting, and the great dialogue that they enjoyed. So I just wanted to thank all the members, some of whom are here this evening, also staff members. Jerry Potamus was heavily involved in this, as are others on the staff. For a great document, it's wonderful to be to this point, where as Chairman Murphy said, it's about windows of opportunity, taking advantage of things, and timing is imperative. So thank you for bringing us to the point where we are, and for this great collaboration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have any other comment from the board? Any public comment? So I'll look for a motion. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. The ayes have it. Ananimos.
They're running.
We're off and running, so as soon as we get that final copy, we'll get it off. I think it's important to note that Selectman Putnam is unable to join us this evening because of this illness, and he does want to send his regrets that he could not make at this evening. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. We'll go back to the summary of actions.
Oh, yeah.
The next item would be approved request for a special event Marine Corps League Voluntary Toll Booth, Main Street. I held that, only because I had asked the, last year, I held it as well, because even though this is a wonderful group, they use the Marine Corps, it is not based out of Falmouth, and I was just looking for some additional information, as I did last year, to look to see if any of those scholarships were awarded to folks actually in the town of Falmouth. And Ashley LeBlanc from East Falmouth was a recipient in 2010, and so that answers one of my questions.
Yeah. What happened in 2011 is what your concern is, too?
Well, I just wanted to know whether anyone from Falmouth is ever better to fitter from this.
Well, I was going to say, we had this discussion last year or the year before. Melissa had brought it up, because it was on Labor Day weekend, or it was the day of the classic car show, and I mean, it really was a bit of a traffic issue. And there was a representative here who lives in Falmouth who helps organize this, and I can't remember his name. He's a retired Marine.
Brad Huppert.
Yes, that's right, that's who it was. So I think we have had a good dialogue.
Okay. And I think that's important for folks to know, that if they're making a contribution, they know that it's going to go to someone in this community as well. And it happened to go there, so that was the information we were looking for. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. The ayes have it. The next item is approved request for a special event, military support group polar plunge for the troops, Old Silver Beach, on 119, 2013.
I held it, Mr. Chairman, because last year, you and I plunged with these people.
No, we plunged.
If that's what you want to call it.
No, we actually plunged on the first. This is a different one. We missed this one.
Anyway, I was thinking.
It'll be warmer if you wait till the middle of July, January.
No, I'll bet.
So what, I had put out an email to board members last night. What I was going to do was, I'm going to take Kevin up on a bet and see if we can both do this plunge. And I guess the only way to do it is the one who stays in the water the longest will be the winner, and the loser is going to make a donation to this wonderful group. So that's what we're going to do it, so.
Well, I think you have to make a donation to enter anyways.
Well, we'll do both. I think, I think we'll do a donation.
Keeping under the $50 limit, that we would do it at its $50.
Absolutely.
Everyone heard that here? He can't welch on this?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So that's what we'll do.
So you have a motion?
That's my motion to approve it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. I didn't hear any other takings. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I did offer, make an offer to the town manager's office if they want to join.
Mr. Suso, you were just here last year. You can jump in if you'd like.
I'd be delighted to take that under advisement, if I may.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. The ayes have it. Next up is approved request for a special event, Falmouth firefighters fill the boot. Mr. Jones, did you all that?
I just had a question about the change of date. This is now on August 11th, is that right? Which is the Falmouth Road Race Weekend. And we had an event that we approved last week at the same location, different date, where they were not going to be in the street. Is this one where they actually are going to be in the street at Stockton Chop, Greg?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
I think their application tells you.
It doesn't, I cannot, from the application, really understand. You know, in the previous application we had last week, it was very, very clear what they were going to be doing, and that people, they would only go up to people who signaled to them to come to them. And this one was a little bit more vague as to whether they were going to be standing in the street as people drove by.
Would you like to add the same language as we did for part one?
I guess I had more the concern.
This is adults versus young.
I guess I had more the concern about it during the, on the road race weekend, but maybe that's intentional, because it'll be busier then. That was my other question, and I want to see how that people felt about that.
They put a rain date in on the 25th, didn't they?
The original application was for the 18th, and then they moved it with the rain date on the 25th. And then they moved it to the 11th with the rain date of the 18th.
Right. And if we should ask them to do it the 18th with the rain date of the 25th, or maybe not do the 11th, but that weekend.
There is a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
But then again, to set a precedent, the last time we based our decision on changing the date on the policeman, the chief of police's recommendation, and he did not seem to have any problem with the 11th, so.
I'll move approval.
The police department does say on Saturday, August the 18th, on their.
But that's crossed out.
No, 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 no. On their letter, it's in the Selectmen's file, from Chief Riallo, I have reviewed the request from Scott Thatcher, Trasher, on behalf of the Falmouth firefighters, will conduct the annual fill the boot campaign, MDA, on Saturday, August the 18th. And the department has no problem with the issuance of this permit, so.
But then he has another one, so August 11th.
We don't, but we don't have a response from the police department on that, do we?
Yeah, I don't see that.
Well, we want the information. We have another week together. Well, these are the firefighters who do it, and they've been doing it for several years now. So I think they've been pretty careful and judicious how they approach vehicles. And they don't stand in the street, they stand on the curb.
Long day. This is from 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 at night.
Yeah, what else is that? Do we have the, okay, I have four things for that day already, but nothing around there. Just the carnival at the Marina, the Falmouth Walk, and something at the fairgrounds.
Well, yeah.
But. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. The ayes have it. Okay. And that concludes the summary of actions. Next up, we're going to discuss maintenance of private roads. And this has come to the board's attention because of one specific situation. However, in investigating this, we have found out many things about our maintenance of private roads. So I'm going to turn this over to, to Mr. Duffy, to give us, frame this discussion a little bit. I had asked him to come in this evening, so that we could discuss this, because this may require a vote of town meeting in the fall, for us to actually maintain our private roads, something that we have reflected to do over the years, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank Duffy, your town council. This came up in the context of Black Beach Hills Road. The, some of the residents came to the town manager's office and made a request for some assistance. Mr. Suso contacted me, and that resulted in looking into this issue, kind of in a general way. And what I'm going to talk about tonight is not that road in particular, although there may be somebody here who would like to talk about it, that's fine. But I'm just going to talk about private roads in general. Back in 1962, the town meeting adopted General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 6H, which authorized the town to repair private roads without liability. And I want to emphasize it, without liability. So when we undertook to repair a private road, we weren't responsible, or we had limited responsibility for it. Now, about 15 years after that town meeting vote, the legislature repealed Section 6H, and the legislature substituted another mechanism for dealing with private roads. It enacted Chapter 40, Section 6N, which authorizes the town to adopt bylaws to make repairs to private roads, to recover the cost of the repairs, and also to assess betterments for the cost of the repairs. Now, that happened in 1977 or so, but the town has never adopted a bylaw, at least I can't find one on the subject. So what we have here is a situation that since 1977 or so, the town has had no authority for making repairs to private roads. Now, there has been a practice at the DPW, specifically with respect to dirt roads anyways, that somebody on the dirt road will call the DPW, they'll ask for a grader to be sent out to grade the road. The town will send a grader out, they'll make the temporary repairs, and they seem to have been doing that for a number of years. But I don't think there's any specific authority for that practice. So I think it's a question that if the town wants to continue to assist people who live on private roads, that we should sincerely take a look at a bylaw and craft a bylaw that meets our needs and protects us from the liability for undertaking these efforts. Now, Chapter 40, Section 6N, again, provides that the town can adopt a bylaw on the maintenance of private roads. It allows the town to make temporary, temporary repairs. The repairs cannot be permanent, they can only be temporary repairs, so it doesn't put us in the business of repairing private roads. Among the other things, the bylaw shall make determination, one, the type and extent of repairs to be made, whether or not drainage is to be included, if the repairs are required by public necessity, and setting some, setting forth some kind of criteria to determine what the public necessity is. The number of percentage of abutters who must petition the town to make the repairs. So if you have a lengthy road with 50 abutters, you're going to determine what percentage of them have to apply to the town before you operate under the bylaw. The bylaw can also authorize that a selectman to determine if betterments will be assessed for the repairs. Also, determine the limits of liability of the town on account of the repairs made, whether or not the way shall be open to the public after the repairs are made at public expense, and whether or not a cash deposit is necessary before work is to be done. I had a conversation with Mr. Murphy in the town manager's office several days ago, and he has asked me if I would prepare for a review and consideration by the board of bylaw under the Section 610, and I agreed to do it, and I will have something for you in advance of town meeting. I'm not going to wait for the warrant to close, but I'll give you something to think about before we get to that point. I just want you to kind of understand the magnitude of the issue that we're facing. I asked the planning board, how many miles of private roads do we actually have? And the answer I got was, I think there's about 200 miles of private roads. Now, these private roads are not all dirt roads. Certainly, Black Beach Hills Road, which is, brought us to this question, is a dirt road. But many of our private roads are in fact paved roads, and they're the roads that were laid out under the subdivision control law. And if you remember, in Falmouth, we had a great development period in the '60s, '70s, and '80s, where we just approved miles and miles and miles of subdivision roads, and they're all, many of them are private roads. And these roads are starting to fall apart, they're starting to deteriorate. I know John Lyons and the Highway Department told me, they're getting calls all the time from paved roads that are collapsing, are having problems, particularly drainage problems. Many of, many of these problems are related to drainage. So it's an issue that has come up. It comes up every year with respect to dirt roads, and it's probably going to come up more often in the future with respect to these subdivision control laws. So it definitely is a subject that merits the attention of the town at this point. A point about the confluence of repairs to roads and roads that are subject to the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, that's a specific issue that came up earlier this week. Some of these private roads abut wetlands, they're near sand dunes, they're near other resource areas, so they are subject to the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And the work cannot be done to repair these roads unless you have either a negative RDA, which is a request for determination of applicability from the Conservation Commission, or an order of condition from the Conservation Commission. Now, I'd point out that Chapter 131, Section 40 of the General Laws, which is the Wetlands Protection Act, specifically says that towns are not exempt from this law. We have to operate within the context of the Wetlands Protection Act, and we have to operate within the context of our own wetlands protection bylaw and wetlands regulations, because we did not provide any exemption, probably couldn't have provided an exemption for the town in any event. The question has come up as to whether or not some of this work can be performed under an emergency basis. A lot of this work is routine, it doesn't really meet the requirement of an emergency, and in any event, with respect to the roads that are subject to the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, in order to have a determination of an emergency, you have to go before the commission and ask them to determine that there's an emergency. They can authorize you to do the work, if it's necessary for the health or safety of the citizens, but part of the deal is that you have to, within 21 days of doing the work, file a complete notice of intent and subject yourself to complete jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission for a complete review of the project. One of the provisions in the General Laws, which I suggested to the town manager, and I would put out there for public consideration, is the fact that many of these private roads might benefit from investigating the private road district statute, which is Chapter 84, Section 12 through 14 of the General Laws. It seems to be a statute that is tailor-made for exactly some of the problems we're facing here. You have a private road, there's disagreement on the road as to whether or not they want to make the repairs, how much they want to spend, so on and so forth. You have a situation where four people who live on the road can petition the town clerk to create a district. The town clerk will issue a warrant, which is very much like the warrant for town meeting, only this is a warrant for a proprietor's meeting, the proprietors being all the people who abut the road. who abut the road. There is a meeting, the people on the road can elect a surveyor, they can elect the clerk, they can determine the work to be done, they can determine how much it's going to cost to do it, and how to collect that money from the proprietors. So, if there is disagreement about how much work to be done or who's to pay for it, it's a majority vote, and everyone falls in line and follows along. There's nothing the town can do about that, but I just mention it as a possible solution to some of these people who live on private roads. It's something I think that should be considered. But in any event, we have a situation here where we have private roads, about two hundred miles. Many people expect the town to repair these roads, but we really have no responsibility to do these roads, they're private roads. Our responsibility is to public roads. Our responsibility and liability is if we do work on private roads, we have to do a first-class job because the liability is for negligent repairs. So, I would urge that we think about adopting a bylaw and going forward with the protection of a bylaw which can limit our liability and also sets up a framework for determining what repairs should be made, how they're to be made, when they're to be made, and all the other ancillary issues that go along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. When this came up the other day, we spoke about this, but using a term that Mr. Putnam would use, this really is going to open up Pandora's Box because many of these dirt roads are currently, you know, graded once or twice a year on a scheduled basis, and quite candidly, I guess we shouldn't be doing that unless we have this bylaw in effect. I don't know whether the board or the town can afford surely to maintain all of these roads, especially when it comes to drainage and things of that nature. The board saw what the betterment was alone out at the Regis Road area. I mean, that was pretty astonishing what the amount was there just as a betterment. So, if we took over drainage and things of that nature, so the board has a lot to think about as we move forward. They also have to understand and realize that these folks pay taxes, they also want some kind of services. I don't think many of the dirt roads are looking for their roads to be paved, but they surely would like them to be passable. I guess the question comes down to some other issues like snow plowing and things of that nature. We do trash collection. Are we able to get to those homes? Are we able to get, you know, police and fire apparatus to those locations? So, this is some issues that the board is going to have to deal with as we move forward. And the private roads district is an interesting concept. If the board remembers, we just did this up on Highfield, and those folks up there have been in line to try to do a betterment, but, you know, there's only so much money that rolls over in a betterment process. So, they've chosen the other option to do a private roads district, so it provides options in both senses. Any discussion from the board and thoughts about this?
May I make one comment?
Sure.
You mentioned snow and ice, and that is done separately, it's a different statutory arrangement. This does not affect our plowing of the roads and removal of snow and ice. We can continue to do that and not have to concern ourselves with these issues.
Great.
But I guess this will be to maybe Ray or John. If the road is in serious disrepair, can we do damage even to our snowplows? I mean... And secondly, when a developer puts in a neighborhood, Frank, how long is he responsible for... I can think of, I think there's a neighborhood out on Fresh Pond Road which is a disaster, and I think he's washed his hands of it. It floods big at the end of the street, and I'm wondering, do they have a bond or anything that they're responsible for?
Yes, there's... Well, there typically is a bond. And I ruled many, many years ago that the bond's good for twenty years. But as far as a road that was built in the sixties, that bond's long gone. Even the seventies and eighties, they're long gone now. So, most of them are beyond the bonding period, and a lot of the bonds were inadequate anyways. I haven't seen it very often lately, but, you know, there'd be a major subdivision, and you looked at the amount of the bond, and it was just a paltry amount, it wouldn't have covered much repair at all.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. You mentioned the bylaw. If the town were to propose a bylaw to town meeting, that bylaw would still have to be approved by the attorney general?
All bylaws of towns have to be approved by the attorney general. However, I will point out to you that there's specific authority in the General Laws to create this bylaw, so I would think that would be a rather straightforward process.
I guess my other question was, in lieu of creating a bylaw, would the legislature consider, say, a... Well, it could be a bylaw, it could be a regulation, or it could be just a plan, under a home rule petition as opposed to a bylaw? Creating something that would be entirely different and not necessarily be subject to other kinds of approvals or other kinds of...
Mean general application?
Yeah, something like that. Could it be done as a home rule petition? In other words, tailored to really meet our specific needs?
Well, yeah, you probably could do it that way, but the idea of authorizing the town to create a bylaw basically is to say, do it yourself.
Yeah.
I might add, if I'm not mistaken, the way you explained it is that we could or we could not charge fees. It would be up to the board or the town itself whether they wanted to charge fees to do any of this type of work, right?
One of the matters that you are authorized to put in the bylaw is to determine the betterment charges to be assessed, and also whether a cash deposit is required. In other words, you could get a request to do some repairs in a road, and you could say, okay, we want $20,000 cash deposit on the barrel before we start. Again, it's a judgment you would reserve to yourself at the time based upon the circumstances before you.
And any good bylaw would have to have all those pieces to it, wouldn't it not?
You really have one chance to make a bylaw, and that's the first time. After that, you're just amending it, so try and make it as comprehensive as you can.
Well, I'm just thinking that you have a lot more flexibility if it were done as a home rule petition, I would think.
No, I think you have more flexibility as a bylaw.
As a bylaw?
Yeah.
And you're saying, I mean, you're... What I understand you to say is that it's likely that the attorney general will not have a problem with the bylaw because it's something that...
It's specifically authorized.
Specifically authorized. And we just have to really get town meeting to approve it, and then basically a rubber stamp we'd hope the attorney general...
Well, one of the things we do is we'd search, see if any other cities and towns have adopted this bylaw, and try and take the benefit of some of their...
And as you said, amending it would not take a huge amount of work, however, amending a home rule petition would be a length of...
That's a good point. Amending a home rule petition is a far more lengthy exercise than amending a bylaw.
Unless you write it very broadly.
Any other questions from the board? Heather?
Just tell me, other contributions, that you do have a home rule amendment which creates the private road revolving account into which all the betterment payments for private roads that have gone through the betterment process go into that account. Now, at this point, all the betterments are paying for the capital associated with the repairs, but at some point, those repairs will be completed to be paid for, and there will be additional revenue flowing into that account. So, in about ten years, we'll see revenue in excess of the betterment payments, which would then be available to support improvements to other private roads, and that's why it was established. So, you have another piece of the puzzle that might help you build a program that you can sustain.
Right. And I don't want folks out there to get the wrong impression and get scared. What we're talking about tonight is that we're not going to do any of the work that we've been currently doing on these roads, meaning grading some of these roads that don't have conservation restrictions, some of these roads that we have the ability to help maintain to make them passable for public safety areas and things of that nature. So, I don't want folks to get the wrong impression about this discussion tonight. It's just to bring us in compliance with the way the state statute is.
So, we're really looking at a short term and a long term?
That's exactly...
The bylaw being long term, but we have short-term issues that we need to deal with.
Well, I don't know... In the short-term issues, that's a good point. Can we continue to do our status quo until this bylaw is in fact enacted?
Well, we don't have any authority of record for it.
So, that's no?
Well, where does the balance of that and the public safety come in? I mean, and who makes the determination that public safety is really an issue for...
It is public safety.
I lived on a dirt road, so I know how bad it can get.
Okay, and they can get very bad. I went out to that road in Black Beach with Mr. McConney, and it's bad, no question about it. But it is, remember, we're talking about private roads. And I made a point to Mr. Suso the other day in that conversation, that if you have a dilapidated house, the building commissioner sends a notice to the owner to tear it down. And we only get involved if the owner refuses to tear it down. If you have a private road, you would... Somebody from the town can send notice to the people on the road saying, fix it, it's your problem. And then our involvement comes perhaps later if it's not done. But don't think... It's not... We don't own the road.
How many roads...
Go ahead.
How many private roads do we have now that are dirt roads that have conservation restrictions on them similar to Black Beach?
You don't know because you have to look at the proximity of each one. I have no idea of knowing. All I know is there's about two hundred miles of private road in town, according to the planning board.
And of that two hundred, many of those roads are developments that are paved and that they're in good functioning roads.
That's true.
Folks just don't want to have, i.e., people coming onto their roads.
Right.
They keep them private.
Many people have very good valid reasons for wanting to keep their roads private. Absolutely.
So...
Could we ask John or Ray some questions about...
Yep, sure.
Well, I just what I want to... Is answer your question anyway, is we're going to stick with the status quo, or should we not be... This is what I'd like to have the answer.
Well, that's a good question. Don't go anywhere, Frank. That's a good question. Are you saying that we cannot do our status quo now that we know what's going on?
I'm not saying you can't, but I'm saying there's no authority for it. But remember, the liability for the town comes with doing the job improperly, not necessarily with doing it, okay?
Well, our Department of Public Works never does any job improperly.
I'm not suggesting that they do.
Do we have a policy in town where we've been sending any notifications out to owners of private roads that is in disrepair and let them put the onus on them? We don't... Maybe that's something we should consider.
It's typically spurred by a call to town hall or to the Department of Public Works that prompts these gradings. It's not something that happens without a call, if I'm not mistaken. Is that... Do you want to address that, Mr. Jack?
Thank you.
No, that is correct. And even as far as having a road, a private road that's on some type of automatic grading system doesn't make sense for us because we're not going to... Once we send that piece of equipment out to East Falmouth in the summertime, it's not coming back for a while, okay? So, we want to know when we go out there that there's a valid reason for it to do so. I would point out, though, although we have been doing it for many years on request, just the grading of the roads, we don't do the drainage or the actual pavement type of repairs. But Frank really does have a valid point with the issue of liability, that once we are aware of something like this, it can, it really can cause problems. Because when we go and grade a private road, there could be private property drainage issues or runoff issues and what have you, and depending on how a road is graded, we may or may not even be aware of it, and then ultimately become responsible for it. When the question comes up, you had no authority to go there.
Have we had any of those occurrences in the past?
You're going to be looking at one very soon on a town road. And specifically with drainage.
I'm talking about a private.
None that I'm aware of recently, but it can happen.
I mean, let's not talk gloom and doom here.
No, I just...
Yeah, I understand the possibility, but...
Once is enough, whenever it does happen, that's what I'm...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other big issue, of course, is the resource areas. That's kind of a dividing line right now because that involves, unlike a private road that isn't in one of those resource areas, that involves a regulatory commission that actually exercises authority over that road, so it makes a difference.
If... Okay, I have a question.
You have a question?
Wait, if a private party had to contract with a business, are there people in the area that even have the kind of equipment that would be required to do something like that?
Oh, yes.
Oh, there are?
Yes.
Like Lawrence and Lynch or somebody?
Yes. There's a number of contractors that are fully equipped to handle grading of private roads.
Right, but then it comes down to one person, typically this is usually spurred by one or two people on the road who make that phone call on behalf of the other neighbors. If we hire a private contractor, or they hire a private contractor, they have to get everyone together, i.e. the private roads district, to be able to get the work done.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, one real kind of humorous one has to do with, like, the bike path. We get two calls on the bike path. The first one is, when are you going to plow out a bike path because I want to use it to ride my bike? And as soon as we plowed, we get the second call, which is, why did you plow out a bike path? Because I wanted to cross-country skate. So, I know of one instance in Woods Hole area where we went in and graded a private road, and then the people complained that we graded the private road, and literally had residents almost going head-to-head over that. And so, to this point, we do not grade that road because there's no consensus on residents of the private road to invite us there, if you will. So, that can happen.
We could beat this thing all around, but I think what we're looking at now is, we now know that we're not supposed to do any maintenance or any type of work on a private road. By law, we are prohibited from doing that. But in the interim and in the long term, we know we have a long-term problem that we need to resolve. But we also have a short-term issue that really comes down to public safety, and I don't know, I'm just familiar with Black Beach because I see it occasionally in walking, and I know what it's like, and I know how difficult it is. So, my concern is how do we solve that issue, the public safety issue, and all the other... Putting the other issues aside for the time being because we haven't been following them anyway in the short term, knowing that there is a liability issue, we could probably resolve that in some fashion and a temporary measure. But how do we deal with a road that has public safety issues and also has the conservation issue? I mean, there has to be a way out of this, and how do we do that?
And I think Frank summed that up. They have to do a private roads district because they need to get the authorization from the Conservation Commission, give an illustration. And I feel for the folks out there on Black Beach Road, but last year, the same thing happened. We went in there because the road was impassable for the fire department. The fire department made a determination, we graded it. Went away for the wintertime, folks show up in the summer, all of a sudden it needs to be graded again. But conservation wasn't really happy about us doing it to begin with. So, this year, the fire department in writing has determined that the road is passable, so it's not a public safety concern. So, we don't have that to rely on at this point in time. The road might not be in great shape, but public safety has determined that it is passable and that it is not a hazard for public safety. So, now we're caught in the trick box here of the Conservation Commission is saying you cannot do that, and we can, you know, what we really need to do is get a plan to be able to do that, just like we have a beach management plan. Private beaches have beach management plans. We just approved one, or one was just approved from the Conservation Commission for New Silver Beach, beach management plans. So, that's what needs to happen is the folks need to get a management plan for the road. Afterwards, we can figure out who's going to actually do the grading, but the Conservation Commission, this board knows, we get, just for folks out there, we get calls all the time about the Conservation Commission, and quite candidly, folks, they're a regulatory body. We appoint them, but we surely cannot overrule them. They go based off of the town wetlands regulations. We have no authority whatsoever to change that. And I'd like town council to explain that to everybody out because that's one of the reasons we invited town council tonight. This board does not have the authority to change what the Conservation Commission says. Mr. Duffy, would you explain that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think you pretty distinctly explained it. Conservation is created, it enforces the State Wetlands Protection Act, the town's wetlands protections bylaw, and the wetlands regulations. And the Conservation Commission is responsible for applying the written regulations and the written law to a specific set of circumstances that come before it. I know some people think they just sit there and act off the top of their head, but that's not what they do. They actually follow the regulations and apply them, and if you look at their decisions, they refer to the source of their authority. apply them. And if you look at their decisions, they refer to the source of their authority. And your role is simply to appoint the members of this body, the Conservation Commission. And that's pretty much it.
Well, so what you're really saying is, if someone lives on a private road, and there are no conservation issues at all, the people on the private road can hire whoever, whomever they wish to grade their road, or not, I won't say plow, because that's a different issue. So they can do that. But people who live on a road, a private road, dirt road, that has conservation issues, has to resolve the issues with conservation.
That's correct. And the determination of whether or not that is, that has to take place is determined by the proximity of the road to the so-called resource areas, the wetlands, the dunes, and other things. I do not know what percentage of our private roads fall within that category. I do not.
Maybe, whatever.
Go ahead, Ted.
No, I wanted to see if Ray or John or Peter knew the percentage of roads that might fall into that same category as Black Beach Road.
Oh, that's-
Hard to-
It has to be within-
It's like a pop quiz, right?
Right. It only has, it only has to be within 100 feet. So if you can imagine, I think, the amount of shoreline we have, and given the density of development that occurs thereof, of 200 miles, I'd have to say at least 50 miles of it, at least. And probably as much as half could fall into that. It all depends, because even some of the newer subdivisions are within wetland areas when they come near a little river or a pond or something like that. And those are usually fairly densely developed. That's where a lot of development occurs, near water bodies and water courses. So, for what it's worth, even on the plowing, we automatically plow all roads. In order to be able to schedule it properly, you can't have trucks all over town skipping this road, skipping that road, and then waiting for them to call us. So from a public safety perspective is exactly why we do that.
Can I ask, let's facilitate this conversation a little further. Town Meeting sets the Falmouth Wetlands Regulations. And we're asking you to craft the bylaw, Town Council to allow us to maintain some private roads, or be able to do some work on those, or have the authority to. But could we also create a bylaw that would allow us to change the Falmouth Wetlands Regulation that would allow us to maintain current roads that are in place? I mean, we just heard from Mr. Jack that we have 50 of 200 miles of roads that are within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, as in, i.e., you know, that would need a notice of intent, or a negative notice of intent. But this body and Town Meeting can set and can entertain wetlands regulations. They were created by Town Meeting. Could we create a wetlands regulation that would not allow jurisdiction on a current roadway?
And, Mr. Chairman, we can't find out for you how many miles we have and how many are within the jurisdiction.
Yeah, that would be awful.
The Town Meeting adopted the Falmouth Wetlands Bylaw. It authorizes the Conservation Commission to adopt the regulations. Town Meeting does not. And so under the current regulatory scheme, the Town Meeting can only amend the bylaw. Now, this conversation has come up before. Nothing has really followed after the conversation. I'm not really going to answer the question tonight, because I haven't thought, thought it through completely. But in terms of who does what, Town Meeting adopts the bylaw. The bylaw says the Conservation Commission adopts the regulations. The Conservation Commission adopts the regulations.
But if I'm not mistaken, didn't Town Meeting have to vote on the changes in the regulations two or three years ago? That we changed the Falmouth-
I don't think so.
We, yes, yes.
We did change some.
Yeah, we did. And we did it at Town Meeting. There was quite a bit of discussion at Town Meeting about it.
In 2008, the DEP revised the wetlands regulations. That was the, and Town Meeting adopted it, the regulation adoption.
I also believe, and there was quite a bit of discussion at Town Meeting, when we updated the Falmouth Wetlands Regulations and they were brought to Town Meeting, my memory serves me pretty good, and this was a few years back, and I know there was some discussion on both sides, but those changed. And I would like to task you to look into that, on whether or not, and how that was, why that had to go to Town Meeting, number one.
Okay, we can do that.
And whether or not we could have this kind of jurisdiction or to tweak the wet- It's going to be up to Town Meeting. It's not going to be up to Kevin Murphy or this board. But I believe it would be up to Town Meeting to be able to change or put something in there for the maintenance of current roadways. That's all I'm asking.
Fine.
Let's try to think outside the box here.
Fine. We'll take a look and see if that happened. I just don't remember it myself right now. I could be mistaken.
Anything else here, discussion with the board?
No, but I think it's good to get that information.
Sure. I think that, you know, the more information we can have, and I'm sure the Conservation Commission is not going to want to see 50 roads come before them if there's a way for us to come up with some planning process of, yes.
So if Ray Jack's office gets a call tomorrow to do a road, what are we doing about the status quo? And I guess we're right back where I-
Well, that's a good question. Can we get back to the desk? How many of these requests do we typically have?
I mean, I know it only takes one to-
Probably more than you think.
Okay.
I looked through our database for last fiscal year, fiscal year 12, and we had 274 work orders for grading private roads. Those are dirt roads, obviously.
Is some of those done twice, or we were saying there's at least 274 dirt roads?
There's at least 274. Some of them may have been done more than once.
Okay.
What we typically do is, in the spring, we systematically go out, and we generally go from village to village, and we take care of the roads. After a long winter, they're definitely in need. Once we get caught up, we'll generally start getting more calls, particularly if the weather's bad. If we get, if we get rainstorm after rainstorm, the roads take a beating, and it's very difficult to keep up with them. So a lot of those are probably repeat throughout the, throughout the year. But typically, it's more than you think.
Let's finish our discussion. I'm going to take some public comment in a minute. And your question is, Mr. Braga, whether we're going to continue to do these.
Yeah, I just-
And given our long history of doing them to this point, I surely don't want to subject these folks, especially in the summer season, to abruptly stopping this.
No, I was just asking where-
That would be my personal opinion, but I, you know-
Liability, I'm just thinking after what Frank had said. I just want to make sure we're, you know, operating where we should be. That's all.
And to clarify what Ms. Flynn said, it's not that it's illegal, we just don't have the authority to do it.
Yeah.
Well, there's no liability. That's what I was getting at.
Well, we're doing it based off of request. Maybe we can do that, is just do it based off of request, instead of doing the periodic maintenance.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes. I know you don't want the work, but-
No, actually, no, believe it or not, though, it is a service that we have performed all these years, and it's something that I would hate to see residents in a bind for, because this is, this is going to be new. So I would say that in the interim, even though we are on notice, that based on request, that we continue to perform the service that we have in the past until such time as it gets resolved, we certainly don't have a problem with that, if the board doesn't.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm going to take some public comment. And anyone who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. You have to go to the microphone. Thank you. Please identify yourself and where you live.
Yeah, I'm Steve Doyle. I live on Black Beach, Twain Gilbert Lane. I'm also president of the association. So I just want to give a little bit more context. One, I appreciate the fact that you're taking up this issue and trying to figure a way to resolve it. So, you know, thank you for that. Right now, what I'd like to, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place. And just put, again, a little bit more context around what has been happening. The road today really is a major health and safety hazard. I've lived there for 12 years. A number of us actually do live there all year round. The road itself is like a mogul run. My car's been damaged, my daughter's car's been damaged, a UPS truck has been damaged, a few other cars have been damaged. The Boston Globe and the Cape Cup Times have suspended delivery of newspapers. UPS is considering whether they're going to deliver anything anymore on the roads. We had a child who was injured trying to drive her bike, ride her bike across it. You know, from the standpoint of believing that you could get an emergency vehicle in and then take someone who's injured out without having a problem is absolutely ridiculous at this point. Over the years, and over the years, the town has graded the road. And we have been trying to work to try to repair it to a better state, so that it doesn't require as much grading either. So we have been working with Conservation, and we put together a plan, and we hired a local engineer. And we also were going, had said we're going to use Lawrence Lynch Corporation to actually do the work, which is local and knows what they're doing. We submitted that, and we worked with Conservation to actually get their input and put all their comments and input into the plan. It's actually on the maps. It's written out with specificity. And Conservation is not against our plan. And we were going to pay for it as well. So we're not asking the town to pay for it. You have to also recognize, we pay almost half a million dollars in taxes from the Black Beach area. No one uses the schools, and we don't use that many services, because a lot of people are just summer residents. But we were going to look to try to do something about these roads. Conservation isn't against the plan itself. They just wanted us to go through notice of intent and order of conditions, so they would have leverage over how the work was done. We did offer to have them supervise it, and we would work with them, but they didn't want to do that. The issue, and trying to create this, one of these road districts, all that does is solve the issue of trying to get money from the different landowners to make sure you can pay for it. It doesn't get around still having to fight with certain absentee landowners, landowners which own land along the road, which are owned by some trusts, that don't want their property or their titles to have an order of conditions on it, that may have to be there for some period of time, especially if we want to continue to do the work. So we are still trying to work a way, to find a way to get the, get the road in better condition, which would also be better for the environment, because right now, it's also polluting the environment, because it keeps deteriorating. So what we're asking now, I think it's very important that we find some kind of a short-term solution to at least get it graded, so that it becomes passable and reduces the health and safety issue, while we're working to try and find a way, whether it's through some additional bylaws and other ways. You know, you have to recognize that the town and Conservation do not have written guidelines on the way these roads ought to be done. There's no plan on the way these roads ought to be done. So, and there probably ought to be for all these unpaved roads. I would also stipulate that I think that, I think the town has some liability one way or the other, because the town has been doing this over the years, and it's not that we didn't receive any notice that it was going to stop. It just stopped. And while we were in this process of trying to get it done, you know, trying to get it permissioned with the Conservation. And the town does have some obligation through its taxes, and also through providing emergency services as well. So I think, you know, there's a legal liability whichever way, and I think at this point, there needs to be just some kind of a practical solution, to at least have a short-term solution to repair it and allow it to be passable, while we work on these other more long-term solutions.
I have seen the correspondence from the Conservation Commission, and up until now, we have not been told that we can't do it. We have been told we can't do it from them. So, once they kind of let us know that they don't want us to do that, you know, they're a regulatory body. Our hands get tied on that part. And again, I'm going to defer to Mr. Duffy. And one of the questions that came up when we had a meeting about the private roads district, and that's why we're here tonight, because I want to answer as many of these questions that we can, to try to find a solution to your problem, as well as the solution of other problems that will arise similar to this in this community. But the private roads district, from what I was explaining, explained by Mr. Duffy, and correct me if I'm wrong, eliminates some of those, those order of conditions on private property versus the road itself. Is that what you explained to me, or would the order of conditions be on the individual homeowners, Mr. Duffy?
I don't think the private road, as Mr. Doyle pointed out, the private road district answers the question about who pays and provides a mechanism for payment. It doesn't specifically address the issue of a so-called order of condition. Now, what the Conservation Commission does, I believe, is they issue an order of condition, and they want it recorded in the registry of deeds against all of the property owners along the road. That's the way it goes.
And there's about 40.
And in this particular case, there were about, as he said, there's about 40 properties. But a number of his constituent group do not want that to take place in the registry of deeds, so it, because once it's recorded, it's an encumbrance on that property. That's a decision, you know, that they're entitled to make if they want to make it. I'm not sure that a road district would solve that specific problem. But it does take care of the issue of owners who don't want to participate, because they can be made to pay a share. But as far as the recording of the order of condition in the registry of deeds, that's another issue that would have to be, I just don't know the answer to it right now.
Go ahead. Did you want to finish, say something else?
No, I think I'll defer to-
Okay.
Mr. Resnikoff.
You have to go to the microphone, introduce yourself, please, first, sir.
So my name is Bill Resnikoff. I also live in Black Beach, and I happen to work with Steve on this problem, because I was asked to be sort of supervising the roads and what happens. And I'm a year-round resident as well. There's one complication that I think should be addressed in this bylaws or in this discussion, is that, in fact, the major road that we're talking about is the entrance road to Black Beach Harbor Hills. And with one exception, none of the owners of that road are members of the association or even have a house on the road. They just happen to be members. It's partially, for instance, the, all the people that have the cabanas and the beach club, they all own a little section of it, in theory. There's a bank in Florida that owns a little section of it. So regardless of what the neighborhood association does, or how it pulls itself together, we don't have any control over those neighbors. Yet all of our properties say that that road is to be available to us to use and to have emergency and service vehicles get in. So we're caught in a bind that even if the neighborhood, even if the members of the neighboring association 100% agreed on conditions of intent, any one of the people that own the property around the entrance road could block it.
I guess-
Go ahead, Doug.
I'm not sure who the question's directed to, maybe Mr. Duffy or Mr. Jack. What would be the ramifications of the public taking of that road? Would that amount, make it a public road that would provide access to the beach by the public access law?
That's an idea.
That we have to get public, I mean, that would solve a lot of their problems. And I'd be interested to know, how would the association feel about the town taking that road?
Well, there's a couple of things before I even go to the council. First of all, Town Meeting has a long history of not taking any property unless it's a friendly taking. And what this gentleman is saying, there are some of the owners that do not want to give up the rights, because they actually own the road that's in front of them. So that being said, that would be one of the issues.
I think that's correct. The town could, the selectmen could sponsor an article to lay out the road and take it as a public way. And then if you make any repairs, you have clear authority under the Venomant Act to impose a fee on all the people who own abutting property. Now, this particular situation's a little different, and both of these gentlemen have told you the unique circumstances here, and you do have a situation that's kind of unique. It's probably not going to be duplicated anywhere else. But when I went out there, and I went out there with Mr. McConerty, it appeared to me anyways, from just my casual observation, that the real problem here is the entrance, not necessarily the roads that go around the houses. And the entrance road doesn't have any houses on it, does it?
No, one house.
Just one. And that is where the problem is. It's getting in there. Once you're in there, you're fine.
No.
Or you're better off. The real problem is-
Please, folks, one person speaks at a time. If you want to come- If you want to come speak at the microphone, you're going to have every opportunity to do this.
That's where Mr. Jones was coming from, when he thought about taking the road. He was talking about taking the entrance road, right?
Exactly. Okay. Did you want to say something else before I call in, Mr. Shear?
I was just going to say one last thing. I think there's also an issue here between maintenance and improvement. I think we have the right to maintain the road. They're private roads, we have the right to just purely maintain them. The issue was improving them. So if you look at the reasons for conservation to object to allowing it under an RDA was based on it being an improvement, which means bringing in other kinds of new grade fill and pitching the road and those kinds of things. But it doesn't prevent us from being able to maintain it. I don't even think it prevents the town from being able to do pure maintenance work, which means a scraping just to get it okay. It's really the issue of doing improvements.
Okay, Mr. Shear? Just so folks know, tonight, this board has no authority to make a decision on this one particular road. This is a broad discussion about, that came about because of what came up on Black Beach Road. Because we found out that we really have been operating without any authority whatsoever to maintain any private road when we get into this. Mr. Shear?
Dan Shearer, Presy St. Six. I own a piece of property on Black Beach Road, actually the entrance prop, most of the entrance property, where a lot of the damage to the road is. And I want to point out to the committee and everybody else here that that was the secondary entrance until, and I don't remember the year, and I guess, I'm 75 and I was 14 at the time, when they closed the other road going out, which was the main entrance, which we always used as the main entrance and everything else. I was the person who found a young man who'd had the gear shifter of his truck go through his head when the train hit him. Wasn't a pleasant experience. And they closed the road going over the railroad tracks because the railroad refused to put a gate down. So everybody now has to go out the other way. That road was never fixed. It was never made, it is sand all the way down. There has never been really fill in it. And that is why it washes out in every storm that we have and these great potholes happen. And as an older gentleman, I can't ride my tricycle on it anymore. It's dangerous. And I feel the town is responsible if I get hurt on my tricycle. And I'm very serious about that. Now, I also own property on Chappaquod Island, which is paved. Now, the town does nothing out there to help us. We do it all ourselves, we pay for it all ourselves, and I'm very much in favor of that. As I think Mr. Jack will tell you, I have been up to him saying, we shouldn't allow dirt roads without charging the people a nominal fee to do it, but I think we should keep them up. I have a driveway that's owned by four people. And we grade that, we fill it, we work on it. And it had wetlands problems, and if the conservation is calling now, we'll probably hear about it. But we keep it passable. And I think you have to do this to all your roads. And if we charge for it or not, that is up to you. And I think with the state of the amount of roads and our financial conditions, we should. But I think we should be allowed to fix a road. The conservation department has given us in the past the right to have the road, they've given us the right to build the houses on the road, and we've got to have access. And if we don't have access, I think we go to the department and ask for tax revision, a very large one. And I don't think the town wants that, and I don't think we want that. All we want is to be able to get to our property safely. And if we do have a fire or an ambulance has to come in, it is very bad. Actually, I don't know, we, our fireman right here, who, my neighbor in our driveway, the ambulance department, after they took out one of my neighbors in the ambulance, came and complained to us that we should fix the road. They had a very hard time of getting her out because she got jostled in the ambulance itself. And we did. We came and repaired it, ordered and fixed it for the safety of the four of us that live in there, four families. We're used to having it done by the town for free. If that isn't the case, fine. But let us do it, or let the town do it at a nominal fee, please. And just saying no is not a good answer. Thank you.
Mr. Shear, you know this community and you know all the regulatory bodies as well as anybody else. And you realize that this board does not have the authority to change what the Conservation Commission says.
I'm not asking this.
And that's the key question. I would suggest that you folks go to the Conservation Commission and plead your case as passionately as you have done here tonight, to ask for the ability to be able to have your road maintained. This board would not have stopped that grader from going down that road. It was the Conservation Commission that did. It wasn't this board that did that. So I think if, you all have valid points, but again, you're asking this board to do something that's not within its power.
No, but why have I lived there for over 50 years and the conservation department has never said anything? I mean, we have conservation departments that come and go. And what one allows and then what next one doesn't is, and I am not complaining about the conservation department. I think they do a marvelous job. And I think there are a lot of dedicated people there who work very, very hard. But I think we have to be able to maintain what we have safely. And that's my only thing. And I think we have to figure a way, I'm not asking you to change the law, I'm just saying, figure a way that we can use our properties.
Well, that is one of the suggestions that we came up with tonight, is potentially changing the law, the Wetlands, Falmouth Wetlands Regulation, so that, look into how we could maintain current roads.
Fine.
So that's one of the things, but we just can't wave a wand here tonight to change.
No, I'm not asking you to. I'm asking you to think about.
And I feel the plight of the beach and everyone.
You said maintain the road. If you say just that, to maintain the roads, that would be a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Well, I have a question for Frank. Frank, about the wetlands. These wetlands regulations that now all of a sudden seem to supersede here, do they specifically, do they have any language in them that allows maintenance of a road? Or what does it prohibit that doesn't allow the road to be maintained? I guess that's my question.
I don't know the answer to that. I didn't reread the regulations before I came here, not expecting to be prepared for that. But it's my understanding, the commission hasn't said they're against this project. They want the owners to file a notice of intent. And that's the problem, they can't seem to get that done. And maybe I'll be corrected, but.
I'm not necessarily going to correct you, Frank, but the, if you look at, read the Wetlands Regulations, there is language in there that would imply that there should be an exception for maintenance. There's also something called the Massachusetts Road Manual for unpaved roads, I believe. And that, again, developed standards expecting in Massachusetts that these roads are going to be maintained. There's an expectation there, and that's what I was also referring to earlier. I think there's a difference between improvements, which are changes to roads. You know, if you were going to widen it, lengthen it, change its structure, change its construction versus maintenance. I don't think it prevents the town or us from maintaining the road, which mainly is just a simple grading, it's not going to cure the problem over the long term. And what we had wanted was to actually help improve the road so it also wasn't washing off into the wetlands.
You realize that you could go for a notice of intent, and if you didn't like the order of conditions that you were issued, you just merely don't have to record that order. And then you get a, you're going to actually, right now, everyone's presuming what the Conservation Commission is going to say. No one here really knows. Until you get an order of conditions from them.
The issue isn't whatever the order of condition says. It's the mere fact of having it filed against properties from a group of landowners who have it as either investments or in trusts and who are going to object to it, who we've already heard. So we'll end up in litigation. This is going to take a long time. This will take a year or two, a couple of years probably, to really get through that process. That's our objection. That is why we tried to work with the conservation to actually develop a plan. We developed a plan. The staff indicated that they were, that it was acceptable. It's just that they want to be able to require this to go through this other process. That's their decision. It's not legally required, but it is within their legal prerogative to decide to force the notice of intent. Our problem is, if it was just the landowners here or the people here in this hall, we'd be fine. We'd allow an order of conditions and allow it to be taken off. We just have a problem actually getting that done, given the unique nature of the whole Black Beach situation with the road from Chappaquod to the fork in particular.
And we've talked about the short-term and long-term problems. Long-term problem, we're hoping we may be able to resolve by the bylaw, which sounds to me also, the improvement to the road is also a long-term solution. Is a possible short-term solution that the private road owners or the property owners can maintain it without an order of conditions, without a notice of intent, and you do the maintenance yourself that you're asking the town to do? Just that maintenance of grading that you hire Lawrence and Lynch to do the grading that the town does not have the authority to do. The town does not have the authority to come in and do to private property the kind of work you're asking us to do.
I don't know whether they've heard from Conservation Commission that they don't want any work done on this property, unless there is a notice of intent. Town manager?
Mr. Chairman, what we've been advised of by Conservation Commission informally is that they're asking the town not to perform grading operations there because they feel that it would damage the wetland.
So it even refers to even a private contractor?
Hmm?
That answers the question, that even a private contractor cannot go in.
Well, they didn't address that specifically, but they indicated, as far as the municipality at least going in, selectmen, progress. As far as the question about what can be done privately, I guess I'd have to leave that to a private attorney.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Mary Ann Storms, also a resident of Black Beach. I own two homes there. My question, Mr. Chairman, is, I haven't, who's liable if in the short-term, as Ms. Flynn was so gracious to want to discuss and Mr. Jones, because it is a short-term issue. One of my neighbors is turning 94 years old on August 4th. Our other neighbor just turned 92, had to go home to Maine after he had heart issues because there was no way we could take him in and out of the roads. If, and of course, any of us, I'm 57, I could have heart, or I could have any issue tomorrow. Who is liable if they can't get out of their home to a hospital in a timely fashion? Who is liable? Is it the Conservation Commission? Is it the town? I mean, it's, I've been in Africa, there are roads that are better than the roads that we are living on right now. It's an embarrassment. It is, I've been, an infringement of having company this summer. My mother-in-law, who has bone cancer, we couldn't bring into the road, it was too painful. And this was four weeks ago. We love where we live. We share Black Beach with everyone, not by car, because you can't park on the road, there's no room to get an emergency vehicle. But thanks to the bike path, which has been a tremendous boon to access to our beach and the beach all along there, the bikers that come through, the families that come through with their wagons filled with children and their toys, the time it takes them to come down to go to the beach where they used to be able to go, and they still trudge, it's remarkable that they do it. It's dangerous. We have signs up on both ends of our road warning bikers not to come through the road for their own safety. Is this what we intended when we put a bike path in to access the beauty of what Falmouth has to offer? Is this what we intended to say, you can do it, but now stay only on the paved bike path and only on the paved roads to get you to part of the beach? You know, that's my concern right now, is that the town of Falmouth that we pay our taxes to will go bankrupt with one lawsuit if I can't get someone in my household or in the households around me out of there in a timely fashion because an ambulance can't navigate it.
I've been told that you own that road and you have the responsibility for that road.
So therefore, we would sue the Conservation Commission for not allowing us?
I'm just repeating what I.
No, no, that's a question.
You own that road. Who's liable? The owner of the road.
Okay.
You can, you can go to the Conservation Commission and get an order of conditions. That's, folks, you have not gone to the Conservation Commission yet. You have not gone through the whole process. Have you gone through the whole?
I'm not quite sure what you mean. We've gone before a hearing, we've gone before them twice over the past few years. We've met with them in their offices, we've worked with them on going up and down the roads.
Have you explained to them your?
We've written memos through all of this and we have explained the situation. The situation that they told, the staff told us was that they can't be concerned about health and safety. Their only concern is about the environment. So they dismiss those kinds of concerns.
The staff told you that, or the board itself? The board makes the decision, not the staff?
The staff told us that and one member of the board on the commission.
That's what I'm saying, folks. This is a voting board. No one member or the staff makes the decision for that board. That's why I'm asking you to go before the board, the Conservation Commission.
We did go before the board.
The commission, that's what I just asked you, you said only one member.
Before the Board of Commissioners, you can look at the tape. Yeah, we went before them, we submitted the material, we talked about it, we explained the issue with health and safety. So we already have the no on that. So we now work between a rock and a hard place. We can continue trying to work out this process. We can start calling the trusts of this other land and see if we can negotiate something with them and so forth. We're talking a very long period of time to get something like this done.
Can I just, we might help clarify, and I haven't held your case at all, but you've gone before seeking a determination of applicability?
Yes.
And it's determined that a notice of intent is required?
Yes.
Have you filed a notice of intent?
No.
Okay.
The notice of intent, we have not filed a notice of intent.
Because you have.
Because we already know the problem with trying to get the order of conditions filed.
Okay.
And it's not what the order of conditions would say, because we don't, I would expect them to basically approve the plan we've already submitted since they've already informally told us that that's okay. It's really the process in trying to get the order of conditions.
So, just to clarify, it's a threshold issue, and I think, I know most of you understand that, that the Conservation Commission has determined that they may not move forward without filing the full NOI. You have land use and ownership issues that prevent you from moving forward with the NOI.
Yes.
Well, from recording the NOI, but I.
Correct?
From recording the NOI. But that doesn't preclude the fact that you could go to them, tell them that you have issues with some neighbors that might take a year or two, and if they see, they may provide relief in that period of time. That's all I'm saying to you, folks.
But we did do that. We said that at the hearing. Yes, we did that.
You haven't gone for the full NOI?
Well, we already raised that with.
I know, but it's a different, I'm just saying that it's a different process. They may issue an order of conditions and allow you a period of time to do some maintenance on that road till you're able to record the order of conditions on all of the properties, giving you that opportunity that you're telling me that would take that time to be able to find those neighbors, to be able to convince those neighbors that it's in their own best interest to protect the road.
But.
But the problem is, the road that we're talking about isn't their road. They live further back with some understanding or something in their deeds that says the entryway has to be maintained. That's the road we're talking about. But that road is owned by people apparently who are part owners of the.
Some of it's owned by owners of barbs and some of it's owned by just other.
And just other people.
Home in the years, different estates.
But they're our owners.
And the other side is really like a marsh, a pond. And the other side is really like a marsh, a pond, whatever. I don't know if that's privately owned or not, or if it's just--
Most of it's privately owned.
So it's kind of like they're trying to do something and none of them are owners of the road that we're talking about. So it's not even their property that they're--
Nor is it ours.
That they need to maintain. It's all these other people's property who are wherever, who have no interest in it. So that's, so, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I think those folks have interest in it, the folks, some of those folks who go into Barmens--
They have legal interest in it.
Mr. Scherer, he comes into the entryway, so they, all these folks have some interest in being able to get, pass over that road if I'm not mistaken.
Well, no, if you're going to Barmens, you don't have to go across this road.
You don't have to even go there.
It's irrelevant, unless you live in Black Beach.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, that's what I'm saying. So there has to be some way in order to get some, some accommodation from the Conservation Commission to allow maintenance on the road until such time as the major issue can be resolved. That's what they need, is some interim maintenance on the road while all these other issues get resolved.
Absolutely.
And as Mr. Doyle said, it might take a year, it might take two years, but in the meantime, people have to live there, and they have to be able to get in and they have to be able to get out, and that's just can't happen unless the road is maintained. There has to be a way to get some kind of temporary approval for, by the Conservation Commission to allow that--
You have to ask for it. That's the bottom line. You have to ask for the temporary approval.
Maybe we could write a letter asking for it.
Yes, sir. Are you stretching back there or are you putting your hand up? Okay, I didn't know whether, sometimes you just hold the wall up. I didn't know whether you want to be on the list.
My name is Fred Gardner. I've been here in the summer since, before any of you were born, I think 1934, '33. We've always had a great relationship with the town. The road has been there. When it got potholes, we called the DPW. They were very cooperative. They'd come up and scrape it. We didn't make unreasonable requests. We realized this was being done at town expense. And as far as I know, I'm not an environmental scientist, it's had no impact on the environment, negative or positive. The road develops potholes, it's scraped, and when it rains, more potholes are created. When I hear this quibbler about whether we can fix the road because the Conservation Commission has inserted itself into the equation, and I don't know about these arcane laws about wetlands and so forth, but whether we scrape it or not is going to have zero, zero impact on the environment. And with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, you say you can't make a decision and override the Conservation Commission. It seems to me this is an Alice in Wonderland situation. We've got an accident waiting to happen, and you folks are gonna be slapped with a liability suit that you won't believe. I would respectfully suggest that all of you come down and drive down that road. Put your own vehicles at risk. I would also say that at our expense, we will pay for an emergency ambulance to go in there under simulated emergency situations. The fire chief makes a subjective evaluation whether it's hazardous or not. I would challenge him to come down there and see if it's a safe road to travel. This is an accident waiting to happen, and the town of Falmouth is gonna get slapped with a huge liability suit. You can talk about these arcane laws about so forth, but with the documentation that we have, reasonable requests asking to have a passable road. The newspapers can't be delivered, that's a small matter. I'll go up to the end and pick up my newspaper. But if we have a medical incident, there'll be a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Finner?
Mark Finner in Precinct 6. A couple of quarterly reports from the DPW back. I actually brought up this issue because I was approached by a few different people with private roads who thought that these people may or may not have been getting preferred treatment, so to speak, with a dense grade and such that they were using. When that subject came up, there was talk of safety and such in the fire engines and ambulances being able to get there. And Ms. Flynn made a mention of another road beyond that was also in access. And now I learned from Dan Scherer that that particular road was closed after the accident because of the trains. I don't know. I tried to go down, and the people in Black Beach set up a table and play cards, and they don't let people down into the neighborhood, so I couldn't view myself. But I went down last year--
Folks, just through the chair.
And there was people saying that they don't let you down through the end of the road.
Through the chair, sir.
That's, whatever. That's what happened. Maybe it was a particular weekend, maybe there was a party, I don't know. But that's not the point. Could this road with the, that goes over the railroad tracks be reopened in the interim until they solve this problem so it would allow ambulance access easier? It's like I said, I couldn't get down there to look, so I don't know if that's possible. But it sounds like an option. I mean, they supposedly all used that road before. Couple of stop signs should be ample for, you know, it's only a, you know, a closed neighborhood, so to speak. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Now, come to the microphone.
I'm Ellen Collins. I own property number nine on Black Beach Road. My husband has been a resident of Black Beach Road for 60 years, and there has never been an issue. We rebuilt two properties and completed some last year because it's such a wonderful place to live in summer. Our winter home is in Barrington, Rhode Island. It's an hour and 15 minutes away. We come through, through fall, through winter, or at least through spring, because we enjoy it. I have five grandchildren from ages six to 16 living on Black Beach. And the reason why we rebuilt the property across the street for the benefit of my daughter, who is here too, is because when we looked at all the properties up and down the shoreline, we felt this was so unique. The grandchildren will be able to take their bike, ride to tennis, to their different lessons, and they are safe with the new bypass. Not anymore. Now, my husband is 97 years old. I don't know what will be tomorrow. He is very fortunate. He's still alive, but he is, has 24-hour care. You tell me how I am, how I will get him safely out of Black Beach tomorrow if I have to call an ambulance. My electrician has said to me a few days ago, Mrs. Collins, this is, I think it's the last time that I will come down this road with my van. After I come to you, even though I have the screws and nuts and bolts in boxes, everything is falling all over the place, and I spend an hour sorting things out again. I can't do it anymore. My contractor says the same thing. My van isn't the best anymore. I don't know whether I can come down anymore. But these are incidental things. The big issue is the health and safety of taxpayers of the town of Falmouth. And I really appreciate the time that you have given this subject, and I can tell that you're sincere trying to find a solution. And I think this is your duty and obligation. This is why you were voted into office, to maintain the safety of your citizens. And if anyone has any idea how I'm getting my husband safely out of our property, if something happens tomorrow, I like to hear it because I don't know how to do it. Because I drive on this road every day, drive to grandchildren, and I can't even bring one car down because I know it would, it wouldn't work anymore because it's very low. But let me tell you, I saw you drive down the road last week. I think I recognize you, Mr. Chairman. I think I was out there and telling some, some workmen what to do, and I noticed you were driving down. And so this, just find a solution, an immediate solution, and then the long-term solution. But I believe, Steve, that you have worked with the Conservation Commission now for almost three years, or at least two, two years plus. I believe that's what you have told us. And I, I just would like to hear from you, what are we going to do? I have another problem. I've lived in many places around the world. I do not understand that you have no superiority over the Conservation Commission. Who has? This is an appointed body. Who has, who, who has the superiority?
Superior Court. That's the only one. Quite candidly, ma'am, Superior Court is the only one that has authority over the Conservation Commission. If you get a notice of intent or you have something that you're not happy with, you would take that to Superior Court.
Not to the Selectmen?
No, ma'am. Our Charter does not allow that. We set policy and procedure. We don't handle--
But all--
Let me just finish.
I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, we do not do the day-to-day operations of the community the way our former government is. This body sets policy and procedure, and the town manager carries out the day-to-day operations of the town. The Board of Selectmen could not order for that road to be graded because we don't have the authority to do that.
I hear you. However--
I'm just trying to explain to you, we have some, some powers, but there would be to change the policies, would be to change the bylaws, and some of these things that I'm trying to come up with as solutions to you folks are only with the things that are within the realm of the Board of Selectmen. I know that you came here tonight thinking that we could provide that relief, and I'm trying to think outside the box for you folks. Believe it or not, it doesn't sound like it, but I surely am. And there is going to be many a folk in this community who are gonna be questioning why we would even consider changing the Falmouth Wetlands regulations to be able to provide for, you know, grading of roads and things of that nature. So when we're talking about these things, this is just not a sure bet as well, that if they went before town meeting, that it would have got adopted. I, I understand, you pay taxes, you deserve to have the same benefits as folks who are on other roads, but we, we have to live by the laws that are created in this community and the state, and we're trying to live within that, those laws. That's one of the suggestions that I asked about going to the Conservation Commission. They too, even though they're, they're appointed, are people just like you and I, ma'am, and if you explain to them and go through the full notice of intent, and you don't like the outcome, you do have another alternative. You can go on parallel tracks. You have another alternative to, to go to Superior Court and then take, take their outcome to Superior Court. So you have, you have some options. I'm trying to figure out all the options. We're talking about long-term and short-term, and one of the things we're talking about is the potential of changing the wetlands regulations. But my first suggestion would be, if you go to them, apply, apply for the notice of NOI and explain, because it's a body of seven citizens in this community who are not paid, they're volunteers, if you explain to them that you have some issues that you need to work out, and you're looking for some relief in the midst of those issues, that you can't attach on the properties and you can't record those order of conditions until you're able to get everybody, I'm hoping that the people we appointed would be able to provide some relief to you in the short term until the long term comes to fruition. That's what I'm hoping. But I can't order them to do that. Public settlement can't order them to do that, just like no one could do that to this Board of Selectmen. So I'm trying to think of some opportunities and some options for you. But the option that you folks are looking for, for us to order that, it can't happen. We don't have that power.
I hear you. Now, I just would like one more explanation. I will only take one more minute of your time. So you say that only the Superior Court overrules the Conservation Commission?
See, you haven't even got, you haven't even got, you, you've only begun the process at the Conservation Commission.
Oh.
Believe it or not.
You're talking to a very experienced person when it comes to--
Okay, so you, you said that you rebuilt the house, so in, in that area, you know that you've only begun the process, and putting off the process is not going to be helpful because, you know, we're talking about potentially amending the wetlands regulations, but that's not a sure bet either.
Well, Steve mostly worked with the Conservation Commission on this subject, so I don't feel I should answer any questions, so you have to. But, you know, I love the town of Falmouth, and I thank you for explanations that only the Superior--
We do too, that's why we're sitting up here.
Only the Superior Court overrules the Conservation Commission. But guess who pays for all the lawsuits pending against the Conservation Commission of disenchanted, disappointed, disgruntled citizens of the town of Falmouth?
Correct.
The taxpayers' money.
That's right, ma'am. And that's why when we were to go to town meeting, we would have an opportunity to explain that there's some liability issues in not doing those, that type of work. But until that, we have a big liability if we try to do something that's against the law. And right now, it's against the law. We've been notified that we can't do that.
I let our attorneys be when it comes to the law. Thank you for--
I'll try to wrap up. I appreciate all the time you're devoting to the subject. It's not against the law. You don't have a law that's specifically authorizing you. And, you know, the, the issue that we have, I recognize, I understand what you're saying with respect to continuing the process. We're still trying to figure out how to continue the process with respect to the Conservation Commission. We're not saying we're not going to continue to deal with them. We just have an issue now that, as you've heard with a lot of passion from people concerned, especially about the health and safety, which I do think legally actually trumps this situation right now, when it gets bad enough, which it is. I also feel that the, I don't think it's, it's against, not only is it not against the law for you to do it, but what you, what the Conservation Commission is really against is improvements to the road. You can't improve it. You can't reconstruct that road. You can't put, you can't bring in better pack material to start reshaping the road. But you can still maintain it, and we can maintain it. It has to be maintained, because otherwise, we're then, we're faced with other liability. As you just said, we're liable if we don't maintain the roads. So, you know, again, thank you for your time. I don't know whether anyone else, I don't want to monopolize it, but again, I appreciate, we do appreciate your efforts to, to deal with this.
Mr. Jack, did you have your hand up?
Everybody hit the nail on the head a little bit, and I think collectively, to fully understand what really happened with Black Beach, it is very, very complicated, but it's also complicated from a conservation point of view. New regulations took effect, state regulations that are applicable to our own con con. I want to say they took effect 2009, could have been 2008 when they were rewriting them. But nonetheless, it was because of stormwater requirements, and the stormwater requirements got written into that, and they changed some definitions. Under those definitions, they tried to define, and it wouldn't quote me on the term, whether it's improvement or whether they were utilizing the terms development versus redevelopment, but either way, when they defined an improvement, it is exactly what they described, that the intent there, they were given some examples of what an improvement is. You're gonna change the intersection, you're gonna widen the road, you're gonna dramatically change the grade. Those were some of the things that were utilized within that definition handbook, if you will.
Those were some of the things that were utilized within that definition handbook, if you will. The Black Beach Association, uh, either individually or collectively, had gone to the CONCON for an RDA, and they felt that the wetlands regulations would apply in full because they were requesting to regrade the road to a different grade, and shifting that grade, and applying material, I want to say 90 tons, 100 tons of material, something of that nature. Quite frankly, yes, that does drive that new definition, uh, as I, even as I saw it. But then to back off from that and say, okay, does grading, which what we do is restore an original grade without changing anything else, does that then constitute, uh, a maintenance versus a improvement under the regulations? And I think that's where the problem is now. It's a definition. It's a, it's an interpretation of a definition that the Conservation Commission's going to have to work through, and the town's ultimately going to have to work through. But I think for the people here to understand, that's the quandary for the town as well, that we can't violate the regulations any more than they can violate the regulations. And that's where we're at right now. So I know it's a mess, but that's what it looks like.
Mr. Jack, Mr. Jones?
Who is able to maintain that road? Who, I mean, we don't own it, the town doesn't own it. Who could maintain that road legally?
They do.
Who's they?
Individually, individually or collectively, collectively, with or without an association, as Mr. Duffy indicated earlier, private roads are maintained by the owners of that private road. Whether or not they have a house there is irrelevant. As long as they own the road, they have the liability and the responsibility for that road, not the town.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We've charged Town Council with a couple of issues tonight. Number one is to make sure that, uh, we come up with some kind of bylaw for town meeting, as well as look at the wetlands regulations in town, whether we have the ability to amend those wetlands regulations in regard to private roads. So we'll look forward to that information from Town Council. Thank you very much, folks. I'm sorry I didn't have a positive answer for you this evening. All right. Next up is approved minutes of the meeting of July the 23rd, 2012. Do I have a-
I'm of approval of the minutes-
Motion?
Of July 23rd.
In a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest one modest-
Yes.
Change on page three, if I may. Uh, in, top of page three in comments, uh, characterized to the town manager, it mentions a, about halfway down, it reads, and that a documented sampling error had occurred. And instead of had, it should have, have read, may have, may have occurred, not had. So, you know, did not know that definitively. That was, uh, speculation because sam- sampling, uh, errors do from time to time occur, but I had no definitive information. So the, the term should read may have rather than had.
Do you want to amend your motion to accept with that correction?
Yes, I'll, I'll, uh, move the amendment. Amend, amend that motion to include those changes.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? The ayes have it. Um, we're under the, uh, the reports from the town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a follow-up to the water sampling issue from last week, I transmitted to the Board of Selectmen a, a water testing timeline to convey to the board the sequence of events as they unfolded. And Selectmen do have a copy of that. Along with that was an excerpt, excerpt from the state statute related to the Department of Environmental Protection's protocol on water sampling and monitoring, uh, which was applicable to the events of last week, which we talked about a week ago at these, this meeting, Mr. Chairman. And those, uh, protocols were routinely followed by the Water Superintendent and the DPW Director. We also attached, uh, a, it was a request to Town Council Duffy to take an independent look at that protocol as to the procedures the town followed. And I attached an email from, uh, Mr. Duffy affirming that the town did follow the regulatory protocol as laid out in that, uh, in that state regulation. And if it will be helpful, Mr. Chairman, I can walk through that timeline or just leave it standing?
Well, why don't you walk through that for the public's information?
Be happy to do so. Again, uh, the water testing timeline, on Wednesday, July 18th, routine water samples were taken from points within the town system. And on this particular day, about eight different samples were taken. These samples were transmitted for testing to the county laboratory, and of course, uh, test results take 24 hours. On Thursday, July 19th, the county lab notified the water division of the town that two samples have confirmed positive for E. coli, those being at the West Falmouth Fire Station and at the Woods Hole Fire Station. Those were the only two locations that confirmed positive from those tests. That same day, Thursday, July 19th, routine notification of the Department of Environmental Protection regarding those test results occurred, again, as a matter of sta- a routine practice. Water Superintendent Mary Beth Weiser notified me as town manager of two positive samples, the ones I noted, West Falmouth Fire Station and Woods Hole. That was at approximately 5:30 PM on Thursday, July 19th. There followed a review and discussion that I had with Mary Beth Weiser and DPW Director Ray Jack as to, uh, review of protocol, et cetera. I contacted Board of Selectmen Chair Kevin Murphy and notified him of those circumstances again that same evening, Thursday, July 19th. On Friday, July 20th, follow-up water sampling was being conducted during the day, again, as per standard Department of Environmental Protection protocol, at the two earlier positive locations, as well as others within the system as dictated by standard protocol. There was a morning meeting in the town manager's office with Ray Jack, DPW Director Jack, to review and update on matters. Uh, we were later joined by Board of Selectmen Chair Kevin Murphy, and that's on Friday, July 20th. Although not required by the regulations, for redundancy purposes, uh, the late afternoon water samples were transmitted for testing to two separate laboratories, both the county lab, as well as a private lab known as EnviroTech. Again, there's a standard waiting period of 24 hours for test results to be returned, and those would not be forthcoming until the next day, Saturday, late in the afternoon. Moving to Saturday, July 21, I received a call from DPW Director Ray Jack at approximately 5:00 PM indicating that the county, county lab has confirmed that all of the follow-up water samples are within the appropriate water quality testing guidelines with no positives for E. coli. A subsequent call from Ray Jack indicated that the EnviroTech private laboratory also independently reported that all samples are good with no presence of E. coli. Town manager again contacted Board of Selectmen Chair Kevin Murphy, notifying him of the favorable test results. The Department of Environmental Protection is routinely contacted and advised as a matter, again, of routine protocol by Water Superintendent Mary Beth Weiser on that same date. And that is a summary of the timeline of the process that we talked about a week ago, prepared for the board this evening, again, with highlighted attachments as to the state regulations and the comment by Town Council Frank Duffy.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Chairman. Continuing on a couple other items, uh, just as a matter of information from the board, on this past Thursday evening, I was pleased to make a, a brief presentation and answer questions at a regularly scheduled meeting of the East Falmouth Village Association at East Falmouth Elementary School. On Saturday, I was invited to make a presentation and did so at the Davisville Civic Association in East Falmouth, and that was at their annual gathering as well on Saturday afternoon. Also, by way of update, Mr. Chairman, the board will recall that last Monday at your regular meeting, you appointed me as an alternate to the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group with an important vote looming on this past Wednesday regarding municipal health insurance reform. I'm pleased to report that I did participate in the presentation, discussion, and vote this past Wednesday at the meeting held in Centerville. I was very gratified when the vote, which supported an initiative of the town of Falmouth, was unanimous in support of the town. Very critical, very important in terms of, uh, the ongoing process and deliberations on municipal health insurance reform. Outside Council Leo Pelican was great, of great assistance in framing this process, an important issue, and vote, and again, it's a significant response to a challenge from certain labor unions opposed to municipal health insurance reform in the Commonwealth. And I do want to underscore that this is not just about the town of Falmouth, but about the majority of municipalities on Cape Cod that operate with municipal health insurance reform, as affirmed by the Board of Selectmen, uh, but also as, uh, specifically authorized by the state legislature and working through the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. And as the board and town meeting are well aware, we've already begun to see considerable results in terms of dollar savings, uh, to taxpayers within the community as a result of, of pursuing that. Also, Mr. Chairman, on Wednesday afternoon, the, uh, this past week, Charter Review Committee met and discussed a number of remaining transitional issues. They've asked if the board could potentially delay slightly, a slight delay in closing the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting, potentially till the third Monday in September, to allow additional time for the, that particular committee to conclude its work. We are reviewing the timetable for the Fall Town Meeting, and we'll be certainly getting back to the board as to what your options are in regard to that. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any Selectmen's report?
Two brief ones, just that, uh, the Wind Turbine Option Analysis Committee is continuing to meet, Pat and I, and, uh, Julie and I, I think we're also at the meeting this past Tuesday. They are progressing as, I think, as quickly as they can, still with their hope that they're going to be able to have some information to get things ready for the town meeting in the fall. And at the, uh, meeting with the Charter Review Committee, uh, the issues that were being discussed were, uh, what do we do in the presence, in the absence of a town manager, and whether we appoint an acting town manager, an interim town manager. And, um, Pat and I were, both expressed our views to ask that the charter not be restrictive in the number of days in which things had to happen, but stick with guidelines as opposed to necessary restrictions, um, that we would then have to follow letter of the law.
Any other reports? Just wanted to make sure folks knew that there is a, uh, an event at the dog park this Sunday, the 5th. It's the Doggy Pool Party at 1:00 PM, so, uh-
I'm not jumping in.
I don't think you want to get in that pool that day. So if anyone can make it, the, they'd be happy to have members of-
Dixie's going, so I guess I'll go with her.
Keep Dixie on the man, on the cement. All right.
Isn't there also the East Falmouth Association event on the, is that on the-
Yes, Saturday.
On Saturday?
There's the Menot Beach fundraiser on Saturday.
Oh, Menot Beach fundraiser, yes.
And prior to that, there's the Old Stone Dock, or they're reversed, I forgot.
The Gold Stock is, is on Sunday, and-
That's on Sunday.
Okay. Um, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Landucci Italia, 824 Main Street, Falmouth.